Members of the Board of Trustees. Please respond present when you hear your name. William Thompson.
Present.
Michael Arvinides.
Present.
Henry Berger.
Present.
Euna Clark. I thought I saw her signing in, but we'll see. Okay. Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez.
Present.
Great. Fernando Ferrer.
Here.
Kevin Kim.
Present.
Myra Lenaras-Garcia.
Present.
Robert Mojica.
Present.
Brian Oberfell.
Present.
Jill O'Donnell Tormey.
Present.
Charles Shorter.
Present.
Fresh off of a sled. Ken Sunshine.
Present.
Sandra Wilkin. That's okay. Martin Burke.
Present.
And Giovanni Picant.
Present.
Okay, Bill, you have a quorum.
Okay. This public meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order. On March 7, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued an executive order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included a suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in person, in public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding and that such meetings are recorded or later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, this board meeting is being held via video conference with a live stream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Copy of the calendar agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute your phones so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I'd like to ask the Secretary to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery.
Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
Great. General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derrick Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Jose Luis Cruz.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement, and Special Counsel Glenda Grace.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Matthew Sapienza.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations Pamela Silverplatt.
Present.
Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer Ryan Cohen.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing Matey Unco.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Risk Audit and Compliance Richard White.
Here.
Vice Chancellor for Human Resources Management Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor for University Advancement Andrea Shapiro-Davis.
Present.
And the interim Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Denise Maybank.
Present.
That's it.
Okay, thanks, Gail. On behalf of the CUNY Board of Trustees, I'd like to say Happy New Year and welcome you to our first board meeting of 2021. Since we last met, the trustees have been very busy with presidential searches for Lehman, Medgar Evers, and Gutman. And I'd like to thank all my colleagues and those involved for their time and effort on this critical task. As you know, the CUNY Board of Trustees could not convene its January 25, 2021, public hearing in person. Instead, the Office of Secretary accepted written and video testimony and statements from concerned individuals on items on the calendar for this February 1, 2021, board meeting via email. Testimonies were accepted until 11:30 PM on Monday, January 25, 2021. Testimonies are always available for review in the Office of the Secretary. The Office of the Secretary has also posted on the Board of Trustees' website all of the testimonies submitted since March of 2020. We did not receive any written or video testimony for this meeting. However, in accordance with Article 2.4(c)(4) of our collective bargaining agreement with the Professional Staff Congress, which permits the PSC to request to be heard at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board to speak to any item of the Board's agenda, provided that such request is made known to the Board Chairperson not less than three days prior to the meeting. President Barbara Bowen, the president of the PSC, has made such a timely request. I'll now turn to Barbara Bowen to address the Board today. And as normally during a testimony, she has three minutes to speak to us. Barbara?
Barbara, it's been admitted. I just.
Right. Good evening. I just got on. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Chairperson, did you call for me to begin?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First, I ask you to imagine that 30,000 PSC members are speaking tonight, and I will invite all 30,000 to watch and listen to your response. At a special meeting of the Board Finance Committee last week, the Chancellor remarked that the decision on the university's budget request is a board decision. You, members of the Board, will make that decision tonight. On behalf of the CUNY faculty and staff and in solidarity with our students, I urge you to vote no on the request and come back to the table with a request that is more ambitious for CUNY. Last week, a trustee on the Finance Committee made a motion that the request include the mandatory cost increases for fringe benefits and collective bargaining increases. The motion was voted down. The reasons given by the Chancellor and the Board Chairperson was that CUNY had to be realistic, and worse, that CUNY has to act responsibly for our funding partner. A mass coalition across the entire state is calling for increased state revenue, in part with CUNY identified as a primary need for new funding. Yet, CUNY's own trustees refuse to ask even for mandatory costs. What message do you think it sends to the faculty and staff, not even to ask for collective bargain increases and benefit increases when we have donated hundreds of thousands of unpaid hours to keep this university running during the pandemic? When we have seen 2,000 adjuncts laid off? When we've been denied our contractually provided raise? When we have turned ourselves inside out to reimagine our entire professional lives so that classes can go on and CUNY students can be served? And you won't even ask? You stated your reasons that you wanted to be responsible to your funding partners. Trustees are entrusted with the mission of the university and responsible to the CUNY students and faculty and staff. So I asked the question the labor movement taught me: Which side are you on? At the same time that you were advancing an unambitious funding request for CUNY, you have failed to provide a full accounting of the federal funds CUNY has received or been allocated. I call on you to provide a full and public accounting of how you have spent those funds. Are you still holding back the $100 million in Institutional Cares Act funds? And then yet you still.
Barbara, your three minutes has come to an end, so if you could wrap up, that would be great.
I will. So let me just say to you, we also call on you not to cancel classes, which you are doing now despite an influx of money. And we call on you to implement a moratorium on the student blocks from the Bursar's Office, preventing students from re-enrolling. Use the federal money to do that. So in conclusion, I would say to you, lift the holds, keep classes running. Don't raise the minimum of classes. In fact, lower the minimum needed for enrollment. Use the federal stimulus funds to protect students, faculty, and staff, and get on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, President Bowen.
I'd be happy if you would like to respond. I'm sure the members of the union would also be happy to hear or respond.
Barbara, I think you understand that we're not engaging in a dialogue, and we appreciate your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me now call in Chancellor Matos Rodriguez for comments.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, Trustees, Presidents, and Vice Chancellors. It is great to be back with you today for my first report of 2021, a year that we anticipate will be defined by the promise of better days ahead and a renewed commitment to our mission. I want to thank you for your continued support to have made CUNY keep running efficiently and without interruption over the last 10 months. It is because of your work and resolve that we are indeed well positioned to make 2021 about success and raising the bar on what we can accomplish together. While we look forward to turning the page on 2020, I will be remiss if I didn't acknowledge some of the inspiring news that bookended the year, high points that serve as a reminder of the important role that CUNY plays in elevating all who pass through our doors. Two of our colleges, the Board of Manhattan Community College and Lehman College, received financial gifts of $30 million a piece from philanthropist and author Mackenzie Scott in recognition of their work as drivers for social mobility. We are particularly proud that these are the two colleges in New York State, the only two colleges in New York State who receive this distinction. The grant is among the largest contributions ever conferred to the university, and CUNY is ready to follow through on the goal set by Scott when she announced that 384 organizations would be the beneficiaries of $4.1 billion for the purpose of addressing food and housing insecurity and economic and racial inequalities. The timing of that extraordinary gift coincided with a second generous grant by New York City Council Speaker Cory Johnson to expand CUNY's ongoing efforts to transform campus spaces into bedrocks of inclusion and civility. These aims couldn't be more necessary as an antidote to the polarizing messages that have dominated much of our recent political discourse, as I detail in my monthly column, inspired by President Biden's call for unity during this inaugural address in January 20. Listening to President Biden, I was reminded that CUNY, through initiatives like the Center for Ethnic and Racial and Religious Understanding at Queens College, is a welcoming home to such civil discourse. Our campus programs in this area serve as national models for promoting tolerance and inclusiveness. Speaker Johnson's support has helped CUNY to expand several diversity, equity, and inclusion work and extend its impact across the university. Watching the inauguration, I was filled with pride by some of the direct or implied connections to CUNY that came up throughout the day. Our history-making Vice President Kamala Harris, a graduate of a historically black university, was sworn in by Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, certainly not stranger to visiting and speaking at CUNY, including at all those commencements in 2020, when I was the president there, and whose mother, Selena, graduated from most of those nursing programs. The most memorable meme to emerge from the inauguration involved another well-known CUNY friend whose fiery mittens triggered an international sensation. I am, of course, speaking of Senator Bernie Sanders, who began his college studies at Brooklyn College, and his image, sitting unfaced in a folding chair, soon started appearing in well-known spots in all our campuses. Biden is our first president to graduate from a public university in nearly 60 years. And a new first lady is a proud community college professor who plans to continue teaching while at the White House, using her platform to highlight issues that are pivotal to higher education. We are encouraged by the president's early proposals to increase Pell Grants and provide relief for student debt. One of President Biden's earliest actions was his signing the sweeping U.S. Citizenship Act of 2021, an ambitious legislative proposal that would provide a path to U.S. citizenship to undocumented immigrants, an issue that hits close to home at CUNY, given our long and proud history of welcoming and delivering services to immigrants and undocumented students. You will recall that five current or former CUNY Dreamers served as the plaintiffs in the U.S. Supreme Court case that ultimately upheld the DACA policy protecting nearly 18,000, 1,800,000 undocumented immigrants, including many who study at CUNY. Just last week, on the floor of the U.S. Senate, Senator Dick Turbin told the inspirational and courageous story of another CUNY Dreamer, Hina Navid, who came to the country when she was 10, graduating from the College of Staten Island with a degree in nursing, and recently completed her Jewish doctor at the CUNY School of Law. Hina has already become a dedicated health policy advocate and worked to help children in the foster care system, and for much of the past year has volunteered to aid COVID-19 patients. In a letter to Senator Durbin, Hina wrote that being a DACA recipient has been life-changing and empowering, but has also forced her to live under the perpetual shadow of uncertainty. Ms. Navid is the living embodiment of so much of what this university aims to achieve. We are so proud of her and happy and hopeful that our federal government will work to pass the long overdue reforms that will give her a fully deserving path to citizenship. Our recent efforts to protect and inform our undocumented students includes a new immigrant student webpage that contains a wealth of resource as well as financial and legal information to help this crucial group complete their education and be informed of possible upcoming policy changes. When I last addressed this board in December, Sandra Linsay, a Lehman nursing graduate and Queens nurse, had just become the national face of hope for the country's vaccination rollout, when she was the first person to be inoculated on December 14. The spotlight once again found Linsay more than a month later, when she appeared during a star-studded televised special, "The Night of the Inauguration." Sandra made us proud once again by using her platform to praise the courage and sacrifice of frontline workers for holding our nation together under excruciating circumstances. I would like to use this platform to commend Governor Andrew Cuomo for his announcement this month to give licensed nurses priority admission to all CUNY and SUNY programs across the state, beginning this fall to help these critical workers fulfill baccalaureate credentials and continue practicing. That is a policy that acknowledges the vital work done by our nurses and a measure of appreciation that is richly deserved. Speaking of fall 2021, comprehensive preparations are underway for a gradual return to in-person instruction next fall, provided it is safe to do so. The distribution of an effective vaccine has given all of us hope that better days are ahead. But until that day comes, we remain vigilant in adhering to safety measures that kept us and the city going. I was proud to announce in December that we have secured priority COVID-19 testing for everyone at CUNY who works or lives on campus or attends or teaches an in-person class. Testing is conducted at designated New York City health and hospital testing sites, thanks to a partnership between CUNY and the City of New York that would allow us to continue to aid in the recovery of the city, state, and region in every way possible. CUNY continues to ease the burden on our resilient students by providing an array of support services that can be accessed through an innovative, one-stop-shop initiative that has been bolstering to sustain its efficacy during the pandemic. The program connects students to life-changing resources that address food and housing insecurity, mental health, financial and tax preparation, and other issues exacerbated by the pandemic. The program has never been more essential to our students than at this moment. We are also grateful to Mayor de Blasio, who announced a series of initiatives last month to help counter obstacles posed by the pandemic to young adults in the pursuit of higher education, with first steps include the launch of a winter bridge program to enroll 5,000 students from the City Public Schools class of 2020 who accepted an offer to CUNY but have yet to be articulated as of the fall semester. The pandemic has increased the imperative for higher education to expand its digital footprint, and the CUNY School of Professional Studies continues to burnish its reputation as a standard barrier in the online education space. In its highest ranking to date, CUNY SPS was ranked on the top 2% of the U.S. News and World Report's Best Online Bachelor's Programs for 2021. The school was listed as the eighth-best college in the nation out of 357 institutions assessed, making it one of the top 10 online colleges nationwide. And of course, for CUNY SPS to be able to provide this type of services, students need to be able to access them. And I again applaud Governor Cuomo for his proposal to require all internet providers in the state to offer affordable broadband service to low-income households, bringing a critical benefit to tens of thousands of CUNY students struggling with inadequate internet access. CUNY also supports the governor's 2021 agenda to reimagine, rebuild, and renew New York beyond the pandemic with a range of economic development and job training programs that would enable our students to play a key role in the recovery of the city and our region. This includes the state's ongoing workforce development initiative, which has already begun creating job training opportunities across the state and supported the efforts of CUNY colleges to help students adjust to a post-COVID job market. Nowwithstanding the prolonged necessity of distance learning, we all know how important it is for students to have the most modern and forward-looking facilities to sustain their studies. For that reason, I couldn't have been happier to take part in a virtual ribbon-cutting last Thursday to celebrate a multimedia dollar upgrade of one of CUNY's most historic buildings, Baruch's Lawrence and Eris Field Building, which received key infrastructure renovations that will benefit generations of students. Setting up our students for success was the focus of a productive policy chat I had with Jonathan Bowles, the Executive Director of the Center for an Urban Future, and over 400 participants on January 19 on the role that CUNY will play in the city's economic recovery and the way in which CUNY can make the city's economy and workforce more inclusive and diverse moving forward. Speaking of planning for the future, CUNY will soon be distributing directly to students 180 millions in new federal emergency relief funds from the Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. We will move swiftly to disperse these needed funds to the students as we did with the CARES Act, and will do them in the weeks ahead. I look forward to testifying on the governor's executive budget this Thursday and sharing with all the legislators about all CUNY has been able to accomplish despite the challenges of the previous 10 months. Before I end, I would like to take a moment to officially welcome Andrew Brown, our new university executive director of public policy to the CUNY family, of public safety, sorry, to the CUNY family. Andrew comes to us after serving in senior administrative positions in city government for more than a decade, and he will be responsible for leading safety and security operations throughout the university. His first day was November 30, and we couldn't be happier that he has joined our community. Welcome, Andrew, to the CUNY family. This brings me to the conclusion of my report, and I will close by remarking how far we have come, how much we have accomplished in the past 10 months. As a historian, I've always found it instructive to examine the past so that we can gain insight and better contemplate the future. And I believe that what we have achieved over the past year in maintaining the momentum of our university, in overcoming so many challenges, so much pain and heartache, is a triumph of the human spirit and has only made us stronger and more determined to climb out of the darkness and into the light. And that is what I believe we have done, and we're here to find ourselves at the onset of 2021, in a better reality and ready to continue the important work of pursuing our goals and advancing our indispensable mission. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, and we cannot see everyone on the screen at the same time, I'll read the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over each other. For clarity and coordination, I'll read all of the items rather than turning to the committee chairs. So you're stuck hearing me again. Okay, and away we go. Item number one, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of December 14, 2020 be approved. May I have a second?
Second.
Over a second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item number two, Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Item 2A, the CUNY Central Office authorized a contract with NicersNet.org Incorporated to maintain membership and provide access to the NicersNet Research and Education Network and Services. The university seeks to support the collaboration needs of its faculty and students by providing access to high-speed networks for research and to highly use collaboration resources, such as internet. Such as internet. Two, NicersNet, or nicer net, has built a network for education and research purposes, providing affordable connections across New York to over 50 colleges and universities, hospitals, museums, libraries, and elementary and secondary schools. NicerNet's fiber optic network provides redundant connections to internet and pairing with national and international research and education networks. NicerNet only offers access to its research and education network and related services to its member institutions. The university is seeking approval to extend its membership with NicerNet, which began in 1985 for an additional five years for a total cost not to exceed $1,1288,800. May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item 2B, approval of an amendment to an existing contract with Culinart Group Incorporated to provide university-wide food services operations. The board approved a resolution at its June 29, 2020, meeting that authorized the university to enter an agreement with Culinart to provide food service operations to its colleges. With the authorization, the university entered into final contract negotiations with Culinart. The subsequent decision by the university to conduct the Fall 2020 and Spring 2021 semesters through a distance learning modality as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic made it apparent to both the university and the vendor that the proposed financing assumptions needed to be reworked. In order to recognize the lower revenue base for the first two years of the agreement and to ensure that university students have as many affordable and healthy food service options when they return to a more traditional learning environment, the university is committed to spend up to $1.3 million for the first two years of the agreement with Culinart. Any additional expenses above the $1.3 million in the first two years of the agreement will be borne by Culinart and may be amortized over the life of the contract, with the university having the option to add an extra year to the agreement if needed. May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item 2C, approval of a contract for City College with Fugitec America Incorporated for an elevator maintenance services. The college requires preventive elevator maintenance and repair work services for eight elevators in the Advanced Science Research Center and the City College Center for Discovery and Innovation. These elevators were installed by the manufacturer on behalf of the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, which facilitated the construction of the buildings prior to their opening in fall of 2014. of the State of New York, which facilitated the construction of the buildings prior to their opening in fall of 2014. Maintenance services include all inspections, adjustments, lubrications, tests, parts, replacement and repairs necessary to keep the elevators in use at their initial performance ability and is originally specified by the equipment manufacturer. These services are vital to the operation of the buildings as well as to the health and safety of the college's students, faculty and staff. The proposed contract ensures continuity of services for the operations of elevators at these two buildings and continued compliance with the relevant city of New York regulations regarding elevator safety. The college is requesting a five year contract with the vendor with a cost not to exceed 1,927,300 over that period. May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item 2D, approval of a per credit tuition rate for the Doctor of Medicine Program at the CUNY School of Medicine at City College. The CUNY School of Medicine does not currently offer per credit tuition for its Doctor of Medicine Program, which is designed as a full time curriculum. However, the school now recognizes that a student's academic progression may be interrupted or decelerated in a given semester to enable a student to address academic deficiencies or other extenuating personal circumstances that prevent the student from proceeding into a subsequent semester on a full time basis. In that regard, the School of Medicine desires to facilitate an affected student's ability to undertake part time study for a prescribed period of time as determined by the Student Academic Progress Committee without incurring the financial burden of the program's current full time tuition. The proposed per credit tuition rate for the Doctor of Medicine Program effective for the fall 2021 semester will be 985 dollars per credit for in-state students and 1,640 dollars per credit of out of state students. These rates are equal to the current total full time medical school tuition divided by the total number of required program credits. May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item 2E, approval of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget request. Let me now turn to the Chancellor and Matt and Matt Sepienza to present the request.
I think it's Hector and Matt who are going to take care of the presentation, right Hector?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll wait for Matt to put up the presentation. Well, as Matt's doing that, good evening, Board of Trustees. Now that the governor has announced the budget and we have presented our budget request to the fiscal committee, I'm pleased to be here with my colleagues to discuss the budget request for fiscal year 22, the full board. As I am sure you will agree with me and as the Chancellor alluded in his opening statement, last year was an unusual and difficult year for all of us. The challenges we encounter continue to affect everything that we do. And it continues to play a role in all our future plans. During this budget process, the constant theme that we heard was that our request should be modest and position us to meet the challenges we face as a result of the pandemic. Because of CUNY's because of CUNY's footprint in the city of New York and in the state of New York is imperative that our support and our recovery efforts really focus on what we need to do to make sure that we're responding to the what the pandemic has created for us, both as a university and how we can help New York City and New York State move us forward and being and creating the what we need to do as a university to help the city recover. So for so for this funding cycle, we are proposing a program that will address critical challenges that we face. At the direction of the Chancellor and in partnership with our provost, we have identified innovative program that and initiatives to support our students. We will have the opportunity, we will have the opportunity to go over these programs in more details in a few minutes, but let me give you the high level key investment areas. We start with students' wellbeing. We plan to further leverage technology and expand capacity to provide variety of mental health services, resources for our students as they navigate great financial and personal loss. The next priority area is workforce development. To support the critical needs to educate and train state and city workers, our workforce program will focus on building connections with private industry. Our next priority area is nursing programs in CUNY School of Medicine. With the coronavirus disproportionately affecting minority communities, we are educating and advancing the careers of future medical workers that live in those communities. And finally, enhancing diversity and advancing racial justice. We're creating access to advanced education and economic opportunities that can raise lower incomes to from black, Latino, X and Asian communities and ensure that our students have access to diverse culturally aware, highly effective full time faculty. Now I'd like to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Matt Sepienza, who will walk us through the operating budget request. Matt?
Thanks so much Hector and good afternoon, everyone. We're going to start with the operating budget request and then we'll get into the capital budget request a little later in the presentation. So in the operating budget request, our current year appropriation amounts are listed on this slide broken out by senior colleges and community colleges. You can see there in the current year, our state operating support, our city operating support, how much is funded for fringe benefits for both the senior colleges and the community colleges. The senior college amount is funded by the state, community college amount is funded by the city. Our opportunity programs, which are a wonderful seek and college discovery initiatives, how much is available through tuition and financial aid? And then programs supported by fee income and tuition, and these are mostly adult continuing ed programs and the revenues that are supported by the student technology fee. So in the current year, for the senior colleges, we have a budget, an operating budget of a little over 2.8 billion dollars. And for the community colleges, a little over a billion dollars. In this request for fiscal 22 that we're asking you to consider this evening, we are seeking 29.7 for from for the senior colleges from New York State and 48.1 for the community colleges from New York City, which would bring our total budget for next year to a shade under 2.9 billion for the senior colleges and a little over 1.1 billion for the community colleges. So our overall budget on the operating side would be a little over 4 billion dollars. So wanted to show you the breakout of that those requested amounts, 29.7 for the seniors and 48.1 for the communities and those are listed here. And as as Executive Vice Chancellor Batista said, really want to communicate our appreciation for the terrific work done by our Executive Vice Chancellor, University Provost Jose Luis Cruz and his team on both the academic and student support side for their partnership in putting this request together. So the individual initiatives within those four major categories that Executive Vice Chancellor Batista mentioned earlier are listed here. Prioritizing student mental health, creating a nursing pipeline program, enhancing the workforce development programs that we currently have at our campuses, accelerating CUNY's online presence, enhancing diversity and advancing racial justice, creating meeting the need resource centers at our campuses, investing more in our successful CUNY Core program, creating an adult college navigators at our colleges, investing in the CUNY School of Medicine and then providing revenue relief to our community colleges. And we'll, we'll go through all of these in just a minute. So we'll start with the first major category, which is student wellbeing. And this was something that we had targeted even in last year's request before the pandemic. But certainly coronavirus has made these need, has exacerbated these needs and has really made it even more of a priority. We were very pleased to use $5 million of the CARES Act for student mental health. And in this request, we're requesting additional funds for those areas. And these include things for housing insecurity, food insecurity, the the needs that our students have who have either dealt with coronavirus themselves or through their families, job losses that our students and their families have experienced as a result of coronavirus. Those are all things that we know we need to help our students with and put them on the path to help to put them on the path to recovery and success. Meeting the needs resource centers, I think most of you know that through a partnership that we had with Single Stop several years ago, we opened up the Single Stop Centers at our community colleges and at John Jay College. The partnership with Single Stop has ended, but the services have not. They've been rebranded as resource centers. And we know that they have provided a tremendous benefit to our students at those colleges. And we know that even more so as a result of the pandemic, we want to enhance the centers that we currently have and provide, create these centers at the colleges that don't have them currently. And so that's what the funding here would do. And again, everything in this category and student wellbeing is to make sure that we're providing the students with the mental and physical needs that they have, make sure that they are, they have the access to the resources that are available to them and put them on the path to academic and career success. Our second category is workforce development, again, another area that we were focused on and investing more resources in prior to the pandemic. But again, the pandemic has certainly shown that this is an area of of need in terms of trying to restart the economy here in New York. And so we really want to double down on those efforts. We want to forge stronger connections with private partners. And it's really a dual role there, making sure that we're giving the students the skills that they need that private industry is seeking and in and at the same time, creating a pathway for our students for both internships and and career opportunities once they graduate from us. We want to expand our successful CUNY Core internship program to provide again, experience for our students, especially that those in the first and second year of their programs. Provide that work experience and also provide resources for our students to help pay for the cost of attending college. And then lastly, adult learners, we know that there's hundreds of thousands of people in New York State that have some college, have some college credits but don't yet have their degree. And we want to bring those students back to CUNY. And we don't not only want to bring them back, but we want to give them the resources and clear the path for them to successfully attain their degree. And one way that we would do that would be to create these college navigators, which would be trained college advisors who would be able to help them with academic guidance, but also financial guidance, logistical guidance about getting their way through the their campus and helping them with any needs that they might have. And so we're really excited about this and think it would be a great tool to help our adult learners come back and be successful in getting their degree. Our third category is nursing and the CUNY School of Medicine. We all know from what's happened over the last 10 months, how heroic our our nurses have been in our communities. And as a result, we know that there's going to be, and we anticipate that there's going to be shortages in nursing. And we want to be the university that's going to provide a pipeline of nurses where they're needed in New York. We have 14 colleges that have nursing programs in the university. So we want to provide that pathway and what nursing, what this nursing pipeline program would do would be to create a pipeline program that would direct high school students who are interested in nursing careers into community college level programs. And once they complete those programs at the community colleges, they would have a clear pathway into senior colleges in order to complete their bachelor's degree in nursing. We know in order to have successful nursing programs, we need to strengthen our support system in terms of having more comprehensive clinical placement on so that our students have better matches with the clinical sites that are available in our communities. We know that program infrastructure is really important, providing the the latest equipment for the existing nursing programs, having online learning opportunities for simulation and training models. Those are all things that would be covered with the requests that we're bringing forth tonight. And then lastly, the CUNY School of Medicine, CUNY School of Medicine, the first graduating class just graduated in 2020. And thanks to support from the governor, we're very proud that those graduates were able to go out and begin to help combat the coronavirus immediately. They worked at the St. Barnabas Hospital in the Bronx, at Staten Island University Hospital on Staten Island and in other areas. And the CUNY School of Medicine, I think one of the real unique things about it that we're very proud of is over half of the student population's CUNY School of Medicine are either black or Latino. And so they really represent their communities, their underrepresented communities. And they serve in underserved areas as well. And so we're looking for additional support for the CUNY School of Medicine. Last area is access diversity and advancing racial justice. We want to improve CUNY's online presence. We know from the experience that we've had over the last two semesters that we were able to convert over 50,000 online courses successfully. And we want to build on that even when we're back in a more traditional setting and we want to create a CUNY online accelerator. And as the Chancellor mentioned in his opening remarks, we're so proud of our CUNY School Professional Studies that US News and World Report ranked them in the top 2% of all online programs. And we want to use School Professional Studies to be that accelerator to help our other 24 campuses really build to scale their online degree programs. We want to enhance diversity and advance racial justice. We're very proud to recently have a Mellon Grant that created more ethnic studies programs throughout the university. And we want to make sure that we're diverse in all areas in terms of our offerings, but also in terms of our faculty. And so what we're requesting as as part of this request are 80 additional full time faculty lines to help with our diversity. And last, community college support. You know, this pandemic and the and the financial crisis that has been created by this pandemic have been really unique in so many ways, but one way has been historically, when there have been financial downturns in New York, it has had a direct impact on community college enrollment, meaning that when unemployment has been high in New York, community college enrollment has also increased at those same times. And in this pandemic, it has been the opposite. Community college enrollment has gone down in the fall semester. We're expecting it to be down again in the spring. It's directly affected this our students in community colleges in terms of the industries that they work in and that their families work in. And our community colleges have had financial struggles as a result because enrollment has gone down by so much. And so we're looking for revenue relief of about 24 million dollars to help our community colleges with that revenue loss and to help them manage through this financial situation, financial challenge that they're in. Lastly, on the operating side, we want to talk just a minute about the predictable tuition policy. Our budget request, we are asking for the and we are supporting the extension of the predictable tuition policy. Originally was put in place in 2011, was extended by New York State again in 2017. We are, we are seeking the extension of that predictable tuition policy again. We're grateful that the governor included that extension in his recently issued executive budget. And want to just point out and make sure that it's clear that this request is not recommending a tuition increase for next year. That will come later in the year as we develop our budget for next year and as we get clarity about our budget. Usually in June is when we'll bring the budget to the full board to approve. So this budget request is not included tuition increase, but it does include the support of the extension of the predictable tuition policy to give us flexibility and give us another tool in the toolbox in terms of helping our colleges manage their their budgets going forward. So that's on the operating side. We'll now turn over to the capital budget and I'm going to turn back to my colleague, Executive Vice Chancellor Batista.
Thanks, Matt. So on the capital, capital budget program, the mission of the capital budget is to maintain facilities that support the university's strategic plans and goals. We're committed to helping students, faculty do their best work in healthy and safe environment. One of the issues shaping our capital budget is the age of our facilities. The age of and condition of our space inventory of 300 buildings demand that we maintain our assets. This chart illustrates the distribution of buildings by age. Dark blue represents the senior colleges and light blue, the community college. As you can see, nearly 14 million square feet of our space was built in 1960, which makes them over 50 years old. That is nearly 50% of our inventory. CUNY will continue to facilitate renewable programs on critical maintenance to upgrade our system, facilities, infrastructure and equipment. One of the things this pandemic has highlighted is the importance of critical maintenance. We also upgraded our technology across the university. As the board knows, we recently presented our vision for the next phase of technology, which is cloud-based solution for CUNY. And some of this funding is tied to those efforts. And finally, we have project, we have projects to meet energy conservation's performance objectives that mandated by the city and the state to make sure that CUNY continues to play a part in addressing climate change. Now I would like to turn it over back to Matt so he could walk you through the numbers.
Thanks Hector. And similar to the operating budget, the capital budget, our focus here was on what are those needs to help us get through the pandemic? What are those COVID-related items that we'd like to focus on in this request? And as, as Hector pointed out, we have three main categories of investment that we're seeking in the capital budget. For our senior colleges, capital infrastructure and equipment of $242 million. Next generation IT systems for $75 million. And then university-wide science labs upgrades of $50 million. So start first with the capital infrastructure and equipment. We learned a lot from COVID. And our campuses did as well in terms of what our needs are to help bring us back to full strength when we get back to more traditional setting. And so some of the things that we're seeking through this component of the request are installing more, more efficient air filters in our campuses, installing UVC lighting, increased ventilation, and really optimizing our building management systems as well. So that when our students and faculty come back, they're coming back to, to the most safest possible buildings as possible. Second item is $75 million to upgrade our academic and administrative IT systems. We know that IT is moving at, it always does move at a very rapid pace and that there's always new technologies. We have a PeopleSoft-based integrated IT solution right now. And our CEO, Chief Operating Officer and our CIO, Vice Chancellor Cohen, have been working on developing that roadmap to bring us into the next generation, which includes also moving to cloud-based solutions. And so we're seeking $75 million in this request to help us get on that path. And then lastly, science lab upgrades. We have been very fortunate over the last many years that we have been receiving capital funds to, to upgrade many of our science labs at our campuses. But as we saw in that chart early, just a moment ago, so many of our buildings are more than 50 years old and so many of our labs are those original labs that were built more than 50 years ago and have not been upgraded. And we know in order to, again, keep up with the technology, keep up with the current pedagogy and research, that we need to provide our students with upgraded science labs. And so what this request, $50 million would do would be to all of those labs who have not been, had the opportunity to receive funding to be upgraded to the latest technology, that that $50 million would go towards that. So that completes our presentation and happy to, to take any questions or concerns that the board members might have. Thank you.
Questions?
Martin Burke, question?
Go ahead, Martin.
For Matt Sapienza and Matt, two related items. One is our colleagues in SUNY, when they presented their budget request in December, included a number of lines relating to flexibility. In particular, employment flexibility. And in particular, a request to authorize SUNY to introduce, if needs be, a furlough policy. I saw none, no references to any of that in this request. And since this may well become a controversial matter across the university, I would like to hear from you if in fact I missed something in my close reading of the budget request.
No, thanks, Trustee Burke. I think there's a lot of overlap between SUNY's request and our request. I think there's a lot of similarity in, in the two requests, which I think is good. It's always good when, when the two systems are advocating for the same things. And, and yes, SUNY did have some items in their request regarding flexibility on, on work rules, on procurement, on getting new academic programs passed by the State Education Department. We didn't include that in our request. And, you know, I think that's, that's okay. We were, like I said earlier, we were focusing on those operating and capital needs to help us through the pandemic. And so it's not included in our request, although it was included in SUNY's. So our focus was really on the funding that we need to help us get through the pandemic.
And just one follow-up and that's, I don't want to put Trustee Mohica on the spot, but I'm referring to his work. That's the executive financial plan for fiscal year '22. And there on page 65, there's a reference to the state's choosing not to, at least right now, pay contractual obligations and to withhold salary increases due on April 1st. Now, I understand that CUNY is not a state agency. But I am curious to know if similar actions are in mind on the part of CUNY in light of the chancellor's referring to the SUNY model when late last year, there was a decision to withhold the then contractually obligated raises.
Well, a, as you said, Trustee Burke, the contractually obligated raises for, that were due in November for the PSC and for two of our smaller unions, the Nurses Union and also the Theater Workers Union were withheld until we get more certainty in our budget. We know those, those are contractual obligations. But we also need to get more certainty in our budget. We're facing reductions from both the city and the state for next year. We have had, you know, significant enrollment losses, especially at our community colleges. So we know that there's uncertainty for next year. And so as we get more certainty, we can make, we'll, we'll be in a better place to make decisions about paying contractual obligations.
Thanks very much, Matt.
I'm a little, I was, I was a little confused. Was the, was your request or your line of questioning in favor of furloughs and layoffs for PSC? I'm, I'm not sure I understood your question. This is Trustee Cortez to you, Martin.
Yes, no, right. I'm simply referring to what, what SUNY asked for in December.
Yes, Mike, got that.
And I was curious to know that if CUNY was asking the same thing, and I gather now the answer is no.
Other questions? Any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote?
Yes, Trustee Berger.
I'm going to vote against this and I'd just like a moment to explain why I'm voting against this.
Before you do that, before you do that, let me present the item and then in the discussion part, that's then not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just hang on for one second. So I have item, let's see. This is item 2E, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Budget Request. Do I have a second for this item?
Rare seconds.
Discussion on this item. Trustee Berger.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I think we all recognize the uncertainties of the state and city finances. But I think we also have to recognize the precarious financial situation that we are in. I think the items that we are requesting are critical and, and fully support them. But I think what's missing is seeking reimbursement for mandated increases, which include not only collective bargaining rent and energy, but also fringe benefits. And my concern is that if we don't request it, we will, if we don't ask, we won't get it and we will, we will have to go to other resources, our programmatic money to make up those increased costs. And I just think as a strategic matter, it's a mistake not to have it in this budget request. We had a much fuller discussion at the Fiscal Affairs Committee. I don't think we have to go through that again.
No. And, and I would just, just to say that is as trustee, as, as the chair of the committee had indicated during that meeting, this is kind of the beginning and, and we will get other opportunities and other bites at the apple and I will leave it at that. So let me. Yes.
Hi.
Trustee, yes.
Me, me or?
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Vasquez. I'm sorry.
Okay. So I, I will vote in favor of this, but I want to be on record and for all of us that we had a five-year tuition, whatever, the, the plan, tuition, the planned tuition program. And we were feeling quite comfortable that any revenues, future, future plans should not be dependent on, on tuition increases. And I would like us to, I understand the precarious situation. I understand that the, the, trust me, I understand the city's financial situation and the state's. That being said, I want us to take some serious consideration as alternatives to though, to, to using that as a primary revenue source. And I say that because it is increasing as a revenue source and we're becoming reliant on it to a degree that makes us feel uncomfortable as a public, makes me feel uncomfortable. And I'm sure many of us as, as a public university. So with that, I, you know, I will vote in favor of this, but I need to put that with, with that objection.
I, I think, I think most of us, all of us agree with you.
Trustee Picquart has something to say.
Go right ahead, trustee.
As a student representative on the Board of Trustees, I will be voting no on this budget request. And I just want to echo something very important that trustee Lauren Cortez-Vasca has mentioned in terms of the predictable tuition policy plan. As an institution, it is extremely important for us not to rely on increase of revenue on the backs of students, balancing the budgets on the backs of students with continuous tuition hikes. Obviously, we know there's not a specific tuition hike in this exact budget request, but that is something that will be looked at in the future. And it is very important as the institution that serves the working-class people of New York and in this world, it is very important for us to understand that we cannot balance the budgets and finances on the backs of students. There are many struggles that students are going through, mental health services that need to be expanded and students support services. We have students who are not enrolled because they were birthar holds and they simply cannot afford to come back to campus. And I think it's very important as a student representative that represents not only the students, but working-class people in this institution. I cannot vote in favor of a budget request that doesn't have adequate support services and adequate resources for our students and just the CUNY community as a whole. And it's very important as, as my colleagues to learn and to understand the paramount of urgency that we cannot afford any more tuition hikes. We cannot, tuition hikes are not, the predictable tuition policy, it is not something that's predictable, predictable in favor and, and that will help our working-class individuals in this institution. So I will be voting no on this budget request. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, um, we're gonna, I guess we'll now vote on this item. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. I realize that trustee Berger and trustee Picquant are no votes on this item. All right, that item is approved. Item number three, Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research, item 3A. Establishment of a program in advertising leading to the Bachelor of Science degree at Queens College. Queens College proposes to offer a Bachelor of Science degree in advertising in order to prepare students for their pursuit of careers or advanced degrees in advertising, strategic communication or media studies within the current and developing media landscapes. Changes in how media companies generate revenue have fundamentally shifted due to digital and social media. It is no longer sufficient for students to learn only the basic tools of advertising, copyrighting, which is still rooted in the print media model. This new program at Queens College will appeal to students across disciplines and will offer students courses in the practices of advertising and marketing, theory, history and critical thinking, as well as the option to pair their work with a minor in data analyst analytics. Students graduating with this degree will be well-positioned to work in marketing, as New York City is the marketing and advertising capital of the world. The program will positively affect college-wide enrollment and will, and will contribute to the improvement of retention and graduation rates. May I have a second for this item?
O'Donnell Torme, second.
Discussion on the item? Any comments? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item 3B, Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. Establish a new interdisciplinary center for advanced technology and communication in health. The Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy proposes the establishment of the Center for Advanced Technology and Communication in Health. The center's mission is to develop and implement new technologies and approaches to inform decision-making in the health and public health arena. Connecting a variety of disciplines and leaders who have not traditionally worked in health with researchers will bring decades of health-related experience. CATCH will aim to be a hub at the leading edge of researching, developing and implementing technologies that will help, help better understand, address and communicate the complexities of health and public health systems. CATCH will apply systems approaches to an array of health and public health issues that the, the School of Public Health Team of interdisciplinary experts will work to address. CATCH will adhere to the recently amended Board of Trustees' Policy 1.09 Guidelines for Centers, Institutes, Consortium and Special Programs. May I have a second for this item?
Second, O'Donnell Torme.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item 3C, City University of New York Approval of Actions in the CAPRA Dashboard. Routine academic matters, local academic policies and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form introduced in October 2019. The CAPRA Dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data. May I have a second for this item?
Second, Mayna Garcia.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item number four, Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration, item 4A. City University of New York Approval of the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration Report. The February CFSA report reflects a total of 81 employee actions, including 38 appointments and reappointments with tenure, 27 fellowship leaves and nine acting or interim appointments. May I have a second for this item?
My second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item 4B, Name the James M. and Kathleen D. Stone Distinguished Chair in Socioeconomic Inequality at the Graduate Center. James M. and Kathleen D. Stone are longstanding and generous supporters of the Graduate Center, having donated $4,860,000 to the Graduate Center Foundation to date. These donors have an abiding interest in issues of economic and public policy. The Stones have demonstrated a philanthropic commitment to academic study on the issues of socioeconomic inequality in general and wealth inequality specifically by establishing, establishing distinguished centers at five prominent universities, including CUNY. The Stones began funding at the Luxembourg Income Studies Center at the Graduate Center in 2016 and is renamed in their honor. Their most recent commitment of $9.5 million provides continued funding for the Stone Center. Their most recent commitment of nine point five million dollars provides continued funding for the Stone Center. And establishes an endowed chair position at the center. May I have a second for this item?
I second that item.
Any question on the item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item four C, Name the Diana King Memorial Endowed Scholarship at Hunter College. On October sixth, twenty twenty, the Charles and Lucille King Family Foundation donated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To the Hunter College Foundation to create an endowed scholarship that will support students described as talented artists. And storytellers with a passion and talent for the cinematic, television and media arts who are in excellent academic standing. And who have demonstrated financial need with preference for rising undergraduate juniors. Rising undergraduate seniors and or graduate students in their final year of study. May I have a second for this item?
Second, the item.
Any discussion on the item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item four D, Accept a Request from Teresa Siegel Matinsky. Teresa Siegel Matinsky bequeathed the Franklin Templeton account valued at one million. Okay, one million seventy-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-two cents as of twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-two Lehman College to be used for scholarships. Lehman College requests that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, on behalf of Lehman College, accept the request. Pursuant to the last will and testament of Teresa Siegel Matinsky. And the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the General Counsel or his designee. And that they are and each of them hereby is authorized to execute, seal and deliver any documents necessary. To accept the request on behalf of Lehman College. May I have a second for this item?
Yanis Garcia and Vasquez.
Is there any discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number four E, Appoint Annette Siddique. As distinguished professor at New York City College of Technology. Professor Annette Siddique is ren- is renowned scholar and public intellectual. With exceptional expertise in modern American drama and Tennessee Williams. Dr. Siddique joined this New York City College of Technology as an associate professor in two thousand and two. And was promoted to full professor in two thousand and eight and appointed a permanent member of the doctoral faculty in theater in two thousand and eleven. Prior to serving at CUNY, Dr. Siddique taught at Eastern Michigan University from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two. And was awarded tenure and promoted to associate professor in two thousand and one. Professor Siddique has published three single-authored books, one edited book and over forty essays. She's given over fifty invited lectures and keynotes around the world in the past ten years. Professor Siddique has been awarded the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty honorary Chair Professor of the School of Foreign Studies. Hunan Uni- Hunan University of Science and Technology in China. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item?
I would like to take a just a point of privilege here as the Chair of this committee. To say that um this is a discussion on all of these distinguished professors as well as the early tenure of. Awards that we have granted. I really want to recommend, I really want to commend um. Provide Executive Vice Chancellor Luis Cruz because. The quality of the presentations, that the quality of the individuals is stellar. And we are really proud that we had this opportunity to give people either early tenure. Or make them distinguished professors because it just in, it really elevates the stature of CUNY as a whole. So I want to just say thank you for everyone who works on this process, but I can tell you as Chairperson and a committee person. On this three years ago and the quality that we have now, it is stellar. So I just wanted to be on the record. I said that at the committee meeting. I wanted it to be on the record for the board meeting.
Thank you, trustee Cortez Vasquez. Um, any other discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item number four F, Appoint Miranda Fricker as distinguished professor at the Graduate Center. Dr. Miranda Fricker is an is a renowned scholar of moral philosophy, theory of knowledge and feminist philosophy. Dr. Fricker joined the Graduate Center as Presidential Professor in two thousand and eighteen. Prior to this appointment, she was Professor of Philosophy at the University of Sheffield. And she served as Reader, Senior Lecturer and Chair of the Philosophy Department at the University of London. Dr. Fricker has published six books and edited volumes and thirty peer-reviewed articles and book chapters. Dr. Fricker has given over ninety lectures in the United States and internationally since two thousand and twelve. She was appointed an Honorary Doctor of Letters at the University of Kent at Canterbury. And an honorary professor at the University of Sheffield in two thousand and eighteen. Dr. Fricker was elected a Fellow of the British Academy in two thousand and sixteen and appointed Moral Philosopher of the Spoilation Advisory Panel. A UK government panel that resolves claims from families that lost property during the Nazi era. May I have a second for this item? Need a second from some.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item number four G, Appoint Jose Miguel Martinez Torrejón. As distinguished professor at Queens College. Dr. Jose Miguel Martinez. Torrejón. Is an internationally recognized scholar of the literatures and cultures of Renaissance Spain, colonial Latin America and Renaissance Portugal. Dr. Torrejón joined CUNY as an Assistant Professor in nineteen ninety-seven. And has been a full professor at Queens College since two thousand and five, where he served as Department Chair of Latin America and Latino Studies from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen. He has also been the Director of the Center for Portuguese Studies since two thousand and fifteen. He's published ten books and monographs and forty articles. He's given over fifty lecture and lectures and keynotes. In the United States and internationally. His scholarly work is frequently cited by other scholars and students in articles and dissertations. Professor Martinez Torrejón is expertise as a celebrated colonial author and early advocate of human rights. Led to invitations to participate in the Program of Cultural Cooperation between the Spanish Ministry of Culture. And United States Universities in nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and eight. Uh, I'm gonna, okay, and and other things. I'm going to skip over a couple of things there. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Chair, may I? Just, just obviously incredibly proud of all the remarkable scholars that are being presented uh to be distinguished professors.
I feel.
I do have to comment, having had the pleasure of knowing Professor Martinez Torrejón and actually uh giving the opening. At some uh conferences uh that brought international scholars, particularly he's a world-renowned scholar on El Quijote. Uh, and um so I just want to uh express my my great joy in seeing him being appointed along with the other great. Faculty members that we're honoring today, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about uh Jose. Thank you.
And the only question is, why didn't you put him up for this when you were there? Kidding, kidding. Uh, I guess we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number four H. Uh, award Adam Schiffer with early tenure at Baruch College with an application of bylaw six point two C. Paragraph two. Dr. Adam Schiffer received his PhD in two thousand and fourteen and is starting his fourth year at Baruch. Where he has served as an Assistant Professor in the Department of Mathematics, Mathematics since two thousand and seventeen. Last year, he was recipient of the Henry Wasser Award from the Academy, presented yearly to assistant professors in recognition. Of outstanding research or potential for such in humanities or sciences. Dr. Schiffer is. Is the recipient of a current NSF grant as well as a PSC CUNY grant. And is presently working on a two hundred and seventy thousand dollars NSF REU proposal. He initiated a new type of collaborative undergraduate research program, supporting over three hundred math majors. Were homebound as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and includes students from Yale, CUNY, Egypt and many others. Dr. Schiffer has stellar publication record with twenty-three articles appearing in excellent journals and two more in submission. Dr. Schiffer is among the very best young researchers in this field. And is a suburb superb teacher, having received the Best Teacher Award at Caltech. And his course is being in high demand at Baruch. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item number four I. Uh, award Jacob Collins, Jacob Collins with early tenure at the College of Staten Island with an application of bylaw six point two C. Paragraph two. Dr. Jacob Collins is an Assistant Professor in the Department of History at the College of Staten Island. Where he has received unanimous and strong support for promotion and early tenure. From the department, the college and the Budget Committee. Dr. Collins has recently published the book, The Anthropology, The Anthropological Turn. French Political Thought after nineteen eighty-eight and has a second book under contract with Verso Press. Dr. Collins has also had two journal articles published in New Left Review, a journal for which he also serves as a member of the editorial board. As well as an article in modern intellectual history with another journal article forthcoming in human, in history of human sciences. Dr. Collins has garnered excellent student and peer evaluations for his teaching, which has included nine different course preparations and focuses heavily. On first year and lower division courses, but also includes upper division and master's level instruction. Dr. Collins developed a new innovative history course, New Approaches to History, which focuses on looking at contemporary approaches. Historical thought and encourages writing and critical thought. Dr. Collins has served a year as Deputy Chair, maintaining the department's web and social media presences. While spending two years as Co-Chair of the Outlet Honor Society. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item number four J, Award Alexander Zevon with early tenure at the College of Staten Island with an application of bylaw six point two C two. Dr. Alexander Zevon currently serves as Assistant Professor in the Department of History at the College of Staten Island. His research focuses on link between links between political economy, modern British and imperial history and media and politics and politics. Dr. Zevon's book Liberalism at Large, The World According to the Economist, has been widely reviewed and since the book's publication. He has received invitations to speak at the University of London, Berkeley and Columbia University. Dr. Zevon has published two refer- referred articles since coming to the College of Staten Island and has published articles in London Review of Books. And Le Monde Diplomatique. Dr. Zevon has received numerous awards for his scholarship, including a two thousand and eighteen Binder Award for Outstanding Scholarship from his departments and a two thousand and twenty. Wasser Award from the City University of New York. Dr. Zevon has served as at as the College of Staten Island Coordinator for the Phi Theta Honor Society. And has served as the History Department's Representative on the College Honor Advisory, Teacher Education Advisory and Science Letters and Society Committees. May I have a second for this item?
Shorter seconds.
Any discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number five, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item five A, York College authorized a license agreement with Queensborough Football Club to construct and use a temporary soccer stadium at York College. The athletic, the athletic stadium will support the York College soccer program and other educational purposes at York College. Currently provide a temporary home to QBFC. Under the License and Development Agreement, York will have primary use of athletic stadium. To enhance the educational experience and opportunities available to students and will provide financial assistance to York College. The university will not be obligated to operate or maintain the athletic stadium during the term of the license agreement and the university will they have, will have the option to elect whether the athletics. Should remain in place following the expiration of the license and development agreement. Have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item five B, Authorization to Enter into a Mass Energy Agreement with the Power Authority of the State of New York. University has partnered with DCAS and NIPA to implement energy efficiency projects at university facilities under the previous Encore agreements. DCAS and NIPA have negotiated a new Encore Three Agreement, replacing the previous agreement. In order to continue to implement energy efficiency projects, both comply. With applicable laws and regulations related to energy efficiency and emissions reductions and to generate operational cost savings. It is advantageous for the university to be able to access and use the Encore Three Agreement. Part of its energy efficiency and sustainability efforts. The agreement provides a contractual contractual framework of energy efficient projects with specific projects executed on task. Orders describing the scope, schedule, cost, energy savings and other applicable terms. Any specific project task orders subject to board approval will be submitted to the board for approval prior to execution. May I have a second for this item?
Second, Yanis Garcia.
Any discussion on this item? Will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item six A, Executive Committee Notice of Action Taken Home Number Thirty of Twenty Twenty. Informational purposes with no vote required. A, Borough of Manhattan Community College Acceptance of a Gift from the Twenty Twenty Fund and I'm B. Leaving College Acceptance of a Gift from the Twenty Twenty Fund. There are two items the Chancellor requested uh be added to the agenda today. We'll add one at a time and then call for a vote on each one. Let me now call in a second. Item number seven.
Unmuting. Okay, item number seven is a resolution to appoint Larry D. Johnson Jr. As President at the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College. Whereas Dr. Larry D. Johnson Jr. is currently serving as President of Phoenix College, a multi-campus community college dedicated to providing affordable. High-quality and accessible education in a diverse community. Dr. Johnson leads nine hundred and eighty-three full-time faculty and administrative staff, one thousand part-time faculty and staff. And manages a sixty-two million dollar campus operational budget. And whereas Dr. Johnson was the Campus Provost and Chief Academic Officer, now retitled to Campus President. At Saint Louis Community College's Forest Park Campus, where in partnership with faculty, staff and local government. He formed an Entrepreneurship Academy to promote small business development. Developed a weekend college that targeted working adults, placing them on pathways to earn an associate's degree. And formed the Early College Academy, allowing underserved and low-income high school juniors the opportunity to concurrently enroll in college and high school courses. And whereas Dr. Johnson has nearly twenty years of teaching and administrative experience in higher education, experienced cultivating donor relations. And exploring diverse revenue streams amidst declining state and local funding and a history of leading initiatives to increase student retention, graduation and transfer. Excuse me, and whereas Dr. Johnson holds a DA in Humanities and English Literature from Clark Atlanta University. An MA in Interdisciplinary Studies in Humanities from Florida State University. And a BA in English Literature from Florida A&amp;M University. Dr. Johnson holds a graduate certificate in institutional research. And higher education from Florida State University. And whereas. And whereas the Search Committee chaired by trustee Kevin Kim conducted a nationwide search beginning in July twenty twenty and recommended Dr. Johnson as one of the finalists for the Presidency of Gutman Community College. And whereas after consultation with various community college stakeholders, the Chancellor is recommending Larry D. Johnson Jr. as Gutman Community College's President. And whereas Section six point two point B of the Bylaws of the Board of Trustees states that, and I quote, "A distinguished person of proven record appointed to the title of Associate Professor or the title of Professor who had tenure in another accredited institution of higher learning may be appointed with immediate tenure by the board in its discretion," end of quote. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Larry D. Johnson Jr. as President at Stella and Charles Gutman Community College effective July one, two thousand and twenty-one at an annual salary of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Larry D. Johnson Jr. as a full professor with tenure at Gutman Community College effective July one, two thousand and twenty-one, and placed on leave while he serves as President of Gutman Community College. The explanation reads as follows. Dr. Larry Johnson, D. Johnson Jr. is currently one of the twenty-five community college presidents from across the United States selected for the inaugural Aspen New Presidents Fellowship dedicated to the advancement of student outcomes in completion, learning, transfer, employment, and equity for low-income students and students of color. Dr. Johnson is an advocate for students who arrive to college campuses combating food and housing insecurities and who are in need of mentorship and direction. The Chancellor strongly recommends this appointment.
Um, let me make a motion to add item number seven to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, that item has been added. Uh, let me now present item number seven. May I have a second for it?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Chair, can I just say how excited we are for President Johnson to be joining us in the CUNY family? Clearly a stellar record at Phoenix College as part of the Mari Copa Community College system. So we're very excited about his coming and joining us at CUNY and take the opportunity to chat, to thank the members of the board that served the committee. Kevin Kim, who was the Chair, Arvanez and Leonardo Garcia, President Thomas Isaque Neve, who served as the Presidential Rep too, and Pam Seabrook. Thank you for serving in that committee. And I also, although I know that we'll recognize our work at the end of the academic year, also thank the interim president, Doris Intron, for doing a great job over at Gutman too, and thank her for her service.
Thank you, Chancellor. Any other discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. We have a new president at Gutman. Let me now call on the Secretary to present item number eight.
Item number eight is a resolution to appoint Fernando P. Delgado as President at Lehman College. Whereas Fernando P. Delgado is currently serving as Executive Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs at the University of Minnesota Duluth, a land-grant and sea-grant comprehensive university that serves over ten thousand students through its four academic colleges. And whereas Dr. Delgado was previously the Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs and Provost at the University of Wisconsin River Falls, where he collaborated with faculty on the development of new academic programs and high-demand technical and applied science graduate and undergraduate degrees. And whereas Dr. Delgado has also served as the Dean of the College of Liberal Arts at Hamline University, Dean of the College of Graduate Studies at Minnesota State University, Mankato and Associate Vice Provost, excuse me, for academic programs and graduate studies at Arizona State University West Campus as an administrator. Taught over thirty courses at six campuses as a professor and published or presented over forty works. And whereas Dr. Delgado holds a PhD in Communication Studies from the University of Iowa, an MA in Communication Studies from the University of Iowa, and a BA in Political Science from San Jose State University. And whereas the Search Committee chaired by trustee Fernando Ferrer conducted a nationwide search beginning in June twenty twenty and recommended Dr. Delgado as one of the finalists for the Presidency of Lehman College. And whereas after consultation with various Lehman College stakeholders, the Chancellor is recommending Fernando P. Delgado as Lehman College's President. And whereas Section six point two point B of the Bylaws of the Board of Trustees states that, quote, "A distinguished person of proven record appointed to the title of Associate Professor or the title of Professor who had tenure in another accredited institution of higher learning may be appointed with immediate tenure by the board in its discretion," unquote. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Fernando P. Delgado as President at Lehman College effective July one, two thousand and twenty-one at an annual salary of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Fernando P. Delgado as a full professor with tenure in the Department of Journalism and Media Studies at Lehman College effective July one, two thousand and twenty-one and placed on leave while he serves as President of Lehman College. The explanation reads as follows. Dr. Delgado has over twenty-five years of experience as a faculty member and senior administrator and a profound understanding of the contemporary strategic planning, resource development, and budget control critical for public universities. The Chancellor strongly recommends this appointment.
I make a motion to add item number eight to our agenda. May I have a second for that?
Ferrer, seconds.
That item has been added. Uh, let me now present item number eight. May I have a second?
Ferrer also seconds.
Second.
Discussion on the item, Chancellor?
Thank you. Again, I couldn't be more pleased to add Fernando Delgado as the next president of Lehman if the board approves with a vote. He's been a seasoned scholar and administrator, serving twice as provost in two very, very distinguished systems, the University of Minnesota System and the University of Wisconsin System, where he has served with distinction as provost in two institutions. So we're delighted to have him join the Lehman family who is celebrating after the historic gift from MacKenzie Scott in December. So should make for an easy transition. Clearly want to thank the all the members of the Search Committee, but particularly the ones who are joining us in this meeting. Trustee Ferrer, who was the Chair, and trustees Adore Tierney and Cortez Vasquez, President Budroll, and Associate Vice Chancellor Monica Tavares. I'll be remiss if I didn't thank someone who I made a phone call and said, you want to do something for a year that became two and has done it with great distinction also. Dan Lemons did also an incredible job as the interim president of Lehman. So I know that we acknowledge, we will acknowledge Dan in the future, where I want to give him my gratitude. And while we're talking about searches, we are well underway on the search for the Meghav Evans president. And so I hope to be coming to the board in a month or two, hopefully to make a nomination. And we're also beginning the process of the search at Ostos Community College, and I hope that we'll be able to complete that search and have it ready for a vote when we can be in June. So thank you.
Chancellor, thank you. Any other comments?
Chairman, can I just point out, I just wanted to acknowledge the Chancellor's Search Committee staff as well. Dolly Martinez, Mahalitsege, and Anna Padilla. I've been on so many searches and I know without their efforts, none of this would really get done. And I'm sure they were as helpful to the Lehman search as they were with ours. So I just wanted to put that on the record as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Kevin.
Yep. And also let me thank my colleagues. Uh, all of you have been involved in a number of searches over the last year and a half to two years. And it is incredibly important work that we have done and that we are, and that we continue to do. And as I said, we're establishing and laying out the CUNY of not just today, but the CUNY of tomorrow. And I applaud that as far as the quality of candidates and presidents who are being appointed to these positions, but also, and not to say anything about the past, but just great job as we move forward. And let me applaud you for both the quality and the diversity of candidates that we have named or that we're moving forward on presidents. And Chancellor, let me thank you for bringing all that forward to us. Any other comments on this? With that, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved and Lehman has a new president. There being no other further business, let me ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconds.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I defer to Byron.
Thank you all. Stay safe. This meeting is adjourned. Take care, everybody.